Good evening. I am Trenae Sriggs, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and hereby call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM on this fourth day of April 2023. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Tonight, we will have a school board member participating remotely. When the clerk announces a school board member who is participating in the meeting, that school board member will state the reason that the school board member is participating remotely, personal or medical. If a school board member is participating remotely due to personal reasons, the school board member will need to state the reason and the location from where the school board member is participating. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex School Board Room Auditorium is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Melnick, and attending via Zoom is Ms. Jessica Owens. Ms. Owens, please state your reason and location.
Home for medical.
Thank you.
We have a member absent, Mr. Cole Pepper. Please observe a moment of silence, and after, we will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. There are no awards or recognitions this evening for students or employees. So, we are coming down to the adoption of the Agenda Number Eight. We will amend the proposed Agenda to change 15B, Appointment of the School Board Liaison to the Access College Foundation, and make it 15D, so that the appointment happens after the School Board amends by Law 128 to address Access College Foundation to as an outside organization. That would then make the SITW MOA 15B, PRC Recommendations 15C, and Appointment of the Access College Foundation Liaison will be 15D. Are there any other modifications to the Agenda as presented? Okay. Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the Agenda as presented and modified. Do I have a motion? Mr. Callen, do I have a second? Ms. Brown, any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to adopt the Agenda as presented and modified. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. And there is no superintendent's report, as this is the first meeting of the month. That will come at the second meeting of April. Number 10 is approval of the meeting minutes, March 28, 2023, regular school board meeting. Are there any modifications to the March 28, 2023 special school board meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the March 28, 2023 minutes as presented. Do I have a motion? Ms. Manning, and seconded by Ms. Martin, any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the March 28, 2023 minutes as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. So, we are now in our public comments section, and we will have them until 8:00 PM. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Speakers are responsible for being in the school board room auditorium or online when they are called to speak. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or is not online, or unable to unmute when called to speak, the school board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. The school board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speakers are Emily Labarre, Bethany Wilmouth, and then Bradley Fish.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Labarre, and I'm the president of First Colonial High Schools Gender Sexuality Alliance. From July 2021 to June of 2022, there were 5,641 CPS referrals in the city of Virginia Beach. 1,856 of these were for physical abuse or neglect, an additional 129 were for sexual abuse, and 269 were for mental abuse or neglect. It's easy for one to dismiss these numbers based on the size of Virginia Beach, but this comes out to 1,232.5 reports for 100,000 residents in Virginia Beach as compared to only 870.6 reports for 100,000 residents in Fairfax County. What I mean to say by this isn't to bore you with numbers. It's to prove that a problem exists, and Virginia Beach has objectively worse CPS statistics than other areas of Virginia. It's easy to claim that one group of people is always right and one is always wrong. It's easy to claim that parents will always support their children and have their best interests at heart, just as it's easy to blame all sorts of societal problems on a marginalized group like transgender people. But just because something is easy doesn't mean it's right. If we focus on an ideal world where children are always loved by their parents, we blind ourselves to reality, which allows many children to fall through the cracks. These model policies are misguided. They play on your love and your concern for your children and students, which makes it easy to disregard the fact that not everyone feels that same love and concern. If it weren't for the threat of the 2022 model policies, I might still be here in one capacity or another because of the clear danger many students in Virginia Beach are already in. Under the status quo, transgender students are already at risk for being abused, homeless, and sexually assaulted. The only thing that the 2022 model policies would do is increase this risk. We cannot go backwards. I don't typically talk much about myself here, but I will share one thing. In a few years from now, I want to work as a guardian ad litem. For those who don't know, this is a type of family law attorney, but rather than representing one parent or another, they represent the best interests of the child. We can preach about protecting children all we want, but this means little if there is no action behind it. I understand that the model policies are in a holding pattern, and many of you may believe there is little you can do against them because of that. But I believe that there is always something you can do. Protect your students, all of your students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bethany Wilmouth, Bradley Fish, and then Eden Amato.
Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry. My name is Bethany Wilmouth. I'm a freshman at Salem High School, and I'm here speaking against the 2022 model policies. Over the past couple of months, we've had a variety of people come in: transgender students, some that have been accepted and some who have not been; allies, speaking in their own words or dictating written testimonies from others; parents, sometimes parents of transgender students. Yet, even the pleas and cries from the people you are directly affecting through these bills aren't enough to warrant a decision. So, I'm asking you, what will be enough? We've been here nonstop repeating statistics and sharing stories. One way or another, you will have to step up and make a choice. Are the countless amounts of articles and testimonies describing the suffering of our transgender children's experience not enough? Our message will not fizzle out over time, no matter the backlash or the dirty looks. We will keep standing here, looking you in the eyes, and telling you that these introduced policies are inhumane. VBCPS notably promotes their diversity and sheer appreciation for all different walks of life. This acceptance, respect, and attention needs to be given to all students, regardless of your opinions. Just look back on the past couple of months. People with firsthand experience are telling you that this is bad. The sheer idea of these rules are sending shivers down the spines of transgender students across the state. Everyone who's spoken up here with us is scared, or angry, or just disappointed. It's a raw emotion that we can only restrictively express to you all behind this podium. We are asking you to change your preconceived notion about transgender students. We're asking that, even for one second, you put yourself in the shoes of a transgender student. Several of us here were born with the privilege of feeling safe and secure in the body we were given. It's difficult to imagine otherwise. Regardless, the idea of a school board or system in general is to create a beneficial and comforting environment for all students. The entire reason as to why any of us are sitting here today is because somewhere, at some point in our lives, we decided that we cared. All we ask is that you take a moment to care about, or even simply acknowledge every student. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bradley Fish, Eden Amato, and then Natalie Gonzalez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Sorry. So, three minutes. That isn't a terribly long time. It provides just enough to communicate a thought or two. It allows for most people present to be able to speak their minds without one individual hogging it all. And miraculously, it is within these three minutes that may decide the fate of my transgender peers. It could not be done alone with such a brief window, but because of like-minded individuals banding together, we have been able to tell the stories that are required to help save lives and the right to a person's own name and identity. It is a scary time to be alive at the moment, with states like Florida proving themselves to be hostile to something as simple and true as sexuality or gender. Many of these policies could come to us here, putting children in true danger and leaving minority groups to fear what might happen. It is the hope of those who hate us that we cower, but as you can see, that isn't happening. Never have I felt as just as when I am here trying to defend my friends. And although it is daunting to come before this board, I wouldn't have it any other way until I can be assured that they will be safe. What will it take for the model policy to be put down at last? We already know what will happen if it passes. Students will die, be shunned, or otherwise put into harm's way, all for the argument that it's the right of a parent to know everything that their child is doing. Merely hoping that parents actually know enough to make the right decisions for their children is wishful thinking. I wish that were the case, that every person could always rest comfortable with the fact that no matter what happens, they will have their family, home and parents, behind them, to soothe them in case things get heated. I know I have benefited from this immeasurably, but this type of care is not present in every family. When your parents don't support your identity, or tell you that you're faking it for attention, then that only leaves one more place to find support: school. Let children be who they are or who they want to be. The worst that can happen is that they stumble. But childhood is about stumbling and failing in order to be prepared for the future. Don't take away, don't take that away from us. Keep the right to a name within the hands of Virginia Beach students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eden Amato, Natalie Gonzalez, and then A.J. Quatero.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Eden Amato, and I'm a freshman at Lanston High School. Six months. It's been six months since my peers started speaking about these sickening model policies. Every single person who has spoken has taken time out of their busy schedules to be here. However long of a day I've had, I always want to use my energy to come here and speak out for what's right. Like today, for example, allergies have been kicking my butt all day, I'm not going to lie, but I still wanted to come here tonight because I know that the issues these students face don't take days off. I imagine for the repeating speakers, coming to every single one of these meetings for months can get extremely exhausting. As Emily said in her previous speech, she doesn't want to spend her senior year trying to prevent transgender youth from losing their human rights. You've heard their stories. You've heard multiple points of view on this matter. Dozens of people have stood where I'm standing today to present the reasons why these model policies are harmful and scary to transgender and non-binary students. It's terrible that something as simple as being who you are is something so controversial. As many people have said, transgender students don't distract us from learning. In fact, many of my close friends are transgender, and they're some of the most wonderful, kind, and caring people I know. They treat others with the utmost respect because they know how it feels to be mistreated, discriminated against, and just overall shunned for being who they are. I love every single one of my friends like family, so I'm not going to stand by as their rights are stripped away from them. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, A.J. Quatero, and then Charlie Levine.
Welcome.
Good evening. Every morning on B-days, I walk into my AP Statistics class. Many people find statistics rather boring, and honestly, I'd have to agree, but I chose to take statistics instead of AP Calc or another math class because of its real-world application. In my AP Stats class, all of the data we work with is taken from real studies conducted by various organizations on a variety of topics, from how many high schoolers have part-time jobs in 2005 compared to 1995, to how long is the average pregnancy for horses that weigh over 1,500 pounds. The most interesting thing I've learned in class, though, is the importance of integrity in presenting data faithfully. Little things like adjusting a random p-value or making the y-axis on a graph unevenly distributed can completely change the way data is portrayed. I would like to remind you of the importance of understanding information beyond what's given to you at face value. In my AP Stats class, we learned about confounding variables, factors that could influence the outcome of a study or experiment but aren't accounted for appropriately. At our last meeting, a speaker referenced an incident in which a 12-year-old trans student attempted suicide citing an article by the Alliance Defending Freedom, the same organization that attempted to recriminalize homosexuality 20 years ago in Lawrence v. Texas, and the same organization that argued that employers should be allowed to discriminate against transgender employees merely two years ago. That same article posits that it was the intervention of the school that resulted in the student's suicide attempts. When presented with a single case like this, you must remember to consider various confounding variables that might have resulted in this situation's outcome. Simply put, there are things we don't know that may change the way we view it, and so we must refrain from making judgments without further information. We have stressed and will continue to stress the importance of affirming a student's pronouns on their mental well-being, but addressing a student by the name and pronouns they prefer is not a clinical form of treatment that requires state licensing to practice. It is a basic form of respect. Teachers are not psychologists, and of course, we are all aware of that, but you don't have to be a psychologist to choose to affirm someone's gender identity. These policies fail because they act under the belief that being trans is an illness requiring treatment despite 15 organizations, including the American Counseling Association and the American Academy of Pediatrics, saying the complete opposite. These policies fail because it acts under the assumption that being trans is something a child can be raised, or educated, or treated out of. It is not. And we've seen attempts to do so fail time and time again, often with disastrous results. What school division or teacher or counselor can in good conscience out a student to their family, knowing the potential harm that student could be placed in because of it? Skepticism is vital to critical thinking. When we present statistics and anecdotes, we implore you to think critically about them, even if it may lead you to draw conclusions we don't agree with. We are not by any means exempt from scrutiny, but if we are not exempt from scrutiny, neither are those that oppose us. We firmly believe that our stance will persevere under scrutiny, and we urge you once more to reject the model policies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is A.J. Quatero, then Charlene Levine, then Icarus Landdacher.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Corderero. My pronouns are they/them, and I am a sophomore at Kellum High School. I'm tired. I had a day off of school today, but I've still been at school since nine in the morning, tearing down the set from Kellum's musical that recently closed. My body is exhausted. I turned down hanging out with my best friends tonight, who I haven't hung out with outside of school in months, so that I could come here. And right now, I would really like to be in my bed watching an episode of The Walking Dead before I have to wake up at 5:40 tomorrow morning. Simply put, I don't really want to be here. So, why am I? I like public speaking, and I love the people who I come to speak here with, but that's not why I came here tonight. The fact is, I don't get the luxury of choosing whether I want to be here or not. I need to be here because my life hangs in the balance. I don't get to pick whether I feel up to the task of writing another speech or not because I have to. I have to write, like my life depends on it because it does. It is exhausting to spend hours writing speeches and gathering the courage to stand at this podium just so I can defend the rights I was born with to people who don't know me and might not even care to. It is cruel that at the age of 16, I need to fight for my right to take up space, and my right to be addressed respectfully, and my right to equitable treatment, all while I have the rest of the world throwing the same hateful messages at me. I am tired, and tired of explaining that privacy and safety is a right and not a privilege. Tired of explaining that we deserve to be treated equally. I shouldn't have to spend my sophomore year begging to be taken seriously, pleading for you all not to hurt me or my community more than we are already hurt. The current policies have been a blessing to our community, giving us a semblance of acceptance in our schools while other environments might not be as welcoming. The 2022 model policies propose to leave transgender students defenseless to hatred and violence. By implementing these policies, you will be telling me and every other trans student in Virginia Beach that you don't care about what happens to us. You say that our safety is your biggest priority, and yet, our safety is being treated as worth less than the prejudice of our parents. I am tired of repeating the same thing over and over again and wondering if you're really listening. The students that you claim these policies are trying to protect are coming here, telling you how and why these policies are dangerous. We've had the very parents you want to empower tell you how these policies will hurt their children. So, forgive my exhaustion, but I don't quite understand why these policies are still subject to debate, or why our safety and well-being are still considered disputable. But until you make the right choice, I will continue to be here because I need to. We deserve better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlie Levine, then Icarus Landdacher, then Hannah Tezak.
Welcome.
Thank you. Charlie is not here, so... Good evening. My name is Icarus Landdacher, and I am a non-binary senior in the IB program at Princess Anne High School. As you know, today was the day off for students. Today was our day to have a break and recharge after the end of our third marking period. It was our chance to recharge one last time before we head into spring break. However, we did not choose to spend our day off. Instead, we are here. In fact, it seems like our group is one of the only ones here despite the last school board meeting having only been a week ago. Additionally, I have an exam tomorrow. It's my first IB exam in Spanish, but I am here, I am still here instead of at my house preparing and studying because this issue is just that important to me. As I have stated, I am a non-binary student. I've gone by my chosen name and pronouns for just over a year now, and it's been one of the happiest years of my life, despite the countless obstacles and anxieties I have faced. It is a happiness I would like to give, I would like to be given to other gender non-conforming students just like me in our schools, but this policy would not allow that. Comfort is not often a word associated with identity when it comes to our middle school and high school years. These years throw discomfort in our faces day in and day out as we struggle to find who we are. By allowing the Model 2022 policy to be instated, you add to that discomfort and take away a chance for students to be comfortable with an aspect of themselves while also teaching them that who they are is not acceptable. Students aren't the only ones who are against this policy either. The many teachers we have interviewed disagree with them and what they stand for, that is intolerance. I have a teacher at my school who's not the best with pronouns and messes up every day, but I love them for it because every time they mess up, they catch themselves. They are not perfect. Nobody is. But in opposing this policy, we are not asking for perfection. We are only asking for acceptance. Anti-trans policies are being adopted in dozens of states across the country, and we cannot follow that trend. Differences are what bring progress, innovation, and peace. When has progress ever been made through uniformity? Without difference, our world would be stagnant. Our schools teach us to accept others despite our differences, because it is these differences that make the world that much more interesting. We are on this planet for such a short time. Let's not spend it on a policy that seeks to stifle the very difference in our students we ought to cherish. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hannah Tezak, then J. Cook, then Addison McGinty.
Welcome.
Hello. I am Hannah Tezak, and I am a junior at Princess Anne High School. First, I want to start this off by saying that I appreciate all the work that each and every one of you do for the students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I understand that it is stressful and extremely difficult. Now, I want you to take that pain, that stress, and even the discrimination you may face by being on this board, and amplify it by 100. You feel that? That's how my fellow peers feel about the proposed 2022 model policies, especially the policies that target the treatment of transgender students. In Section 22.1 through 23.3 of the Code of Virginia, it specifically states that the schools must have, quote, "maintenance of a safe and supportive environment free of discrimination and harassment for all students." How is misgendering and deadnaming students a safe and supportive environment? Why are transgender students not considered, quote, "all students"? The definition of discrimination is taking action against a group you have a prejudice towards. So, how are these plans not discriminatory? I stand here as a cisgender female who supports the people around me, my friends, fellow students, staff, and even strangers that are facing complete discrimination under the disguise of justice. These policies are meant to take into consideration the feelings and emotions of the students, but the parent's judgment is what is discussed throughout the whole length of the document. Explain to me why five out of seven of the guiding principles of these proposed policies are about parents rather than students? Why should parents be the deciding factor of who the child should be and what they become? Why should we allow parents to make a carbon copy of themselves when in, when in these policies it is stressed that students should be able to be themselves? When the time comes, will you check the box that will cause an alarming increase in child suicide that will result with the blood being on your hands, or the one that instills hope and freedom into the hearts of the children that you state you are trying to protect? Thank you.
Our next speaker is J. Cook, then Addison McGinty, then Kyle Clark.
Welcome.
J. Cook isn't here, so... Good evening. My name is Addison McGinty. I'm a senior at Florida Kellum High School, and I will be speaking in response to the 2022 model policies. Here we are, another Tuesday, another school board meeting. Here we are, another Tuesday, another school board meeting, another teenager speaking in response to the same issue, the same issue for six months. Why are we still here? It feels like you're not listening. We've made the same argument at every meeting for the past six months. We care about these students. The students' policy will be directly affecting, so we should be able to keep speaking, and we will until action is taken, until you know who we are, who they are. The yearbook staff at my school have no choice but to use the given names in the system to identify the students. Identify. Let's look into that word. One word, one definition. Identify, identity, you. Your name is something used to refer to you. It's a label everyone associates you with. If someone is referring to you and uses a different name than the one you are familiar with, that can feel awful. It feels like they don't know who you are because they don't. Who am I? That's the golden question. Day by day, students struggle with figuring out who they are as a person. However, these actions make it seem as if they are not a person. These actions make it seem as if they are miserable, because they will be. The sad truth is, if there isn't a name, your identity is unknown. A name is something that defines you, something that people identify you with. Identify. There's that word again. Why? Because it is important. It's a term that we carry on our shoulders throughout our lives. It's a term that we associate with ourselves because it is who we are. VBCPS, we should strive to make our school system better, not worse. These policies will make the system even worse than it already is with the idea of not being there for our students, not to mention the extreme increase in bullying in public schools. This will have a negative effect on the future of your schools and a negative impact on the mental health of students because of the neglect to acknowledge who they are as a person. The mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools is to en- The mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools is to encourage growth and progress in the students and the system. But these policies do the opposite. If they are set into action, there will be grave disappointment, fear, and other negative impacts on the students, the very souls you wish to support. I hope you take these, these views into consideration and make the decision that will benefit the students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyle Clark, then Alex Astrott, then Jay Cruz.
I'm Kyle Clark. I'm a junior at Kellum High School, and I have here a testimony prepared by a high school graduate who would remain, or prefer remain anonymous regarding their experience as a transgender student. At the beginning of my junior year, my parents found out that I'm trans. To make a long story short, while they weren't abusive, they certainly weren't supportive. Over the course of two years until I graduated, I may have been living in their house, but in my parents' eyes, I was not their child. I didn't have a car, and being at home was pretty much a living nightmare, so school was my only relief. It was where I could go to be around people who accepted me for who I truly am, and I knew I wouldn't be ridiculed there like I was at home. School gave me a reason to keep going, and I really don't think I would be here today if not for the support I received at school during that time period. This is what school should be. Schools should provide students with a safe and accepting environment that promotes self-expression and growth rather than hindering it. This is what school currently is for many transgender students who cannot look at, or look for support at home due to the risk of abuse and mistreatment. For these students, school is all that they have, and the model policies threaten to take that safe learning environment away from transgender students. And do you know how soul-crushing that is? How utterly demotivating it is when the adults that you once felt safe around now have to follow a policy of invalidating who you truly are? To lose these support systems would be devastating to anyone, let alone a high schooler who already has so much on their plate. I myself am not trans, but I know all too well what it's like to be isolated and to feel like there's nobody in your corner. These policies would replace the currently effective learning environment with one of fear and self-doubt, as students have to endure being deadnamed and misgendered. Otherwise, they may be outed and potentially face harsh punishments at home by unsupportive parents. The smallest change of calling someone what they want to be called can have a significant positive impact on a person's mental health. It doesn't take away from the learning of other students, so why make people jump through hoops just to be called a different name? Why turn a process that should take all three seconds into something so drawn out? It's absolutely unnecessary. These policies affect all transgender students regardless of whether or not their parents are supportive, and they would only serve to cause pain and suffering to those who don't have support at home. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Astrott, and then Jake Cruz.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it concise today because honestly, I'm tired. I'm tired of coming to these meetings and speaking about the same thing for the thousandth time. And as heartless as it may sound, I'm tired of having to hear this, see the fear that comes across my transgender, non-binary peers' faces whenever these policies are discussed and the ramifications hit their souls. I'm tired of dealing with the Department of Education that can't count their own money correctly or even decide to move forward with their own policies, but somehow this board can dictate the identities of students all across the Commonwealth. I'm tired that I keep having to hear that there's nothing you can do about any of this. Richmond didn't say that there was nothing they could do when October 4th of last year, they voted eight to one to pass a resolution rejecting the model policies and, quote, "affirming its commitment to providing protections for all students regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression." On October 4th, the Alomero County School Board didn't say there was nothing they could do when they released a statement condemning the model policies and saying that they would not enforce these policies within their school system. Rocketham County, a county that voted for Donald Trump with 69% of the vote in 2020, didn't say there was nothing they could do when they sent out a press release stating that they would not adopt these model policies within their school system. I'm tired of hearing excuses. I'm tired of hearing silence. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Well, it is past time that this board rejected these model policies. It is past time that this school board assured its transgender students that they can feel safe within their schools. And it is past time that this board stopped dragging their feet into the right thing. I am pleading with this board, do what is right. Reject these model policies. Protect your students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jake Cruz.
Welcome.
Good evening, board members. So on social media, I follow some accounts that tend to oppose our viewpoints just so I can kind of have a pulse on what others are thinking about these issues, and it leads me to see some kind of horrific tweets and remarks about this subject. I'd like to read one to you. Less than 1% of Americans identify as transgender. Every single day, the government, schools, and major corporations support them and dish it in our face. The Baphomet is a half-man, half-woman body with a goat head. It represents evil. This is their representation of their god to mock ours. The powers that be love, this and this is why we see it all the time. They hate God and want you to fall for their demonic agenda. Now, I'm not saying that anyone on this board has a viewpoint about trans people that represents anything near that. I'm not even saying that Governor Youngkin and the Department of Education that made these policies is in synchronicity with extremism of that degree, but it all looks the same when you're zoomed out from it. See, I don't think that the trans students in my schools, having talked to them about this, see much difference between all of the different degrees of transphobia that are out there. Sure, there's skepticism all the way to "I believe that you are the literal Antichrist," but it all comes out the same in the wash. See, George Wallace, people don't know this, but in later years in his life, you know, the famous racist segregationist governor of Alabama, said that he regretted all of these choices that he made and that he realized in due time that he was on the wrong path and he made the wrong calls. But that's not what we remember about George Wallace, right? That's not what anyone remembers him for. And again, I'm not trying to equate this board to anything nearly that evil. All I'm saying is that you are supporting the students or you are opposing them. You are helping trans students who are making their lives better, or regardless of whether it's because you're waiting for the Department of Education to come to a conclusion or because of any other reservations, you are still part of that conglomerate that from 100 miles up is just the wall between trans students and living healthier and happier lives. I'm not blaming this board for taking this consideration or taking their time or waiting for the Department of Education. I get it, that's your jobs. But I'm just saying that, no, every day that you wait, it's a day that you come closer and closer to that conglomerate that is trying to...
30 seconds.
...trans people as pure evil. Every day that you wait, you are painted more with that brush, whether you like it or not. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Beth LeBarre, Donald LeBarre, and Matthew Cody Connor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Beth LeBarre, and I'm pretty sure the board can guess why I've come to speak today. The 2022 model policies as they pertain to transgender students are discriminatory. They do not adhere to the guidelines that have been established as best practices in disciplines such as social work, education, or medicine. The policies do not support our mission statement as a school district. On the VBCPS website, it is written in large print, "Put Students First." Our fiduciary responsibility is to students. We know that gender-affirming environments are considered crucial for mental health and a good educational outcome. I don't know what to make of the fact that the decision to reject these policies that pertain to transgender youth has not been made thus far. What are we teaching our students when we say one thing and do another? The school website says that we value differences, but do we really? Students deserve the opportunity to present themselves to the world the way they feel most comfortable. America has its share of issues with hate and intolerance. Adopting the 2022 model policies would undoubtedly send a message of rejection to transgender students and any other student grappling with differences that we may not even realize. This board has a unique opportunity to show all students just how much we truly value each of them. And before I close, there's at least one child in here that's having a minor heart attack right now because I'm going off script. But you might be wondering why my husband and I come here all the time. And one is to talk to you about how we feel about this issue, and the other is because I don't want anything to happen to any of these students. So I figured there are two people here that have their back because there is a crazy world out there, and I don't want any of them getting hurt. So this is something that means a lot to me, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donald LeBarre, then Matthew Cody Connor.
Thank you. I'm Don LeBarre. I'm a Virginia Beach resident and a parent of students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I don't have a speech prepared for you, so I'm just going to tell you a story or two. When I was a kid, I lived in a small town that was majority white. And when I say that, I mean there was one family that was black. And there was hushed tones of, "Oh, that's the black family." So I kind of took that, okay, I see these adults doing this, so this is how it is. And then I joined the football team, and I played football with one of these kids. And he was an awesome, awesome guy. So I asked my parents, "Can I stay the night at his house?" They looked at each other and they said, "Yeah," and they let me. And I went to his, went to his house and saw his family and his brothers and sisters, and he was just like me. And my point in that story is, when you know better, you do better, and I firmly believe that. Jake talked about George Wallace. When he knew better, he did better. He realized that he made a mistake, and I think that we're always learning. I'm, I've been coming here for months talking to you guys, and two things that I, that I've noticed while I've been coming here. I can tell you Mr. Callen's eye color, and I cannot tell you Ms. Manning's eye color, but I can tell you that she has an HP laptop. I appreciate that most of you guys are listening. You're listening to the students, you're listening to the teachers, you're listening to the parents. I wish that all of you would because these things that you're hearing, this is actual Virginia Beach City Public School students, parents, and teachers that are talking to you because we want your help. So please notice us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor.
Thank you. Here again. Keep coming until you reject these policies. But this is an education meeting, so let's do math. There are approximately 36,000 middle and high school students in Virginia Beach schools. About 2% of the US population would be teachers. Less than 0.25% will be doctors. Virginia Beach, out of those, out of those 36,000 students, that's about 720 teachers, 90 doctors. I picked those because we need more of them. These model school policies will not give us more doctors and teachers, but I can show you what outcomes for students these policies will create. These policies put a spotlight on trans students, but they'll negatively affect all of our LGBTQ students. I quote, "School personnel shall keep parents fully informed about all matters that may be reasonably expected to be important to a parent, including, without limitation, matters related to their child's health and social and psychological development." This will precipitate, this will precipitate the outing of all our LGBTQ youth. That was reading comprehension. Now back to math. More than half of LGBTQ youth do not have a supportive home environment. One in four will become homeless as a result of coming out. For every four students these policies force staff to out, you will be responsible for one homeless student. But I want you to really see it, so let's get more specific. There are approximately 36,000 middle and high school students in Virginia Beach schools. 9.5% of those students will identify as LGBTQ. That's 3,420 children. If those students are outed as a result of these policies, it will cost 855 of them to experience homelessness. But there's more. 36% of homeless youth will become involved in sex work. That's 855 homeless students, 720 teachers, 308 child sex workers, and 90 doctors. For every teacher, Virginia Beach schools put out...
30 seconds.
...you will create a homeless student. For every doctor, you will create 10 homeless students and three child sex workers. I want you to sit with that because that will be your legacy if you let these policies pass. That will be the legacy of our schools in Virginia Beach.
And Madam Chair, there was our last speaker for this evening.
A Technical and Career Education Carl Perkins School Year 24 grant, welcome. Dr. Sarah Lockett, our Director of Technical and Career Education.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Wiens, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. I am Dr. Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education, and as a requirement of the federal Carl D. Perkins Five Grant, we're here tonight to present, for the board's information, the proposed local plan for budgeting grant expenditures for next school year. The federal strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act authorizes funding to local school divisions associated with Perkins Five and reflects our nation's more than 100-year federal commitment to technical and career education programs. The funding allocated, allocated to localities is critical to ensuring that our programs are prepared to meet the ever-changing needs of learners and employers in our city and across the Commonwealth. To remain in compliance with the Act, Virginia Beach City Public Schools must approve and submit a Perkins Five Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education annually. Based on requirements authorized by the standards of quality in Perkins Five, the school division must submit this application for the 2324 school year, no later than April 24th, I mean 28th, 2023. Tonight's presentation supports continuing Perkins Five funding for programs providing more than 33,000 seats in 1,634 technical and career course sections offered to students face-to-face, online, and through dual enrollment. If we can change the slide. Sorry, I have the clicker. Our CTE staff continue to work closely with teachers, students, parents, industry, Virginia Beach Economic Development, the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, local government, and our General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education to ensure that their input is reflected in the budget and plan presented to you this evening. In addition to the local plan and budget, Perkins Five requires localities to conduct a local needs assessment to evaluate program structure and implementation that impact student performance. The impact of spending outlined in this year's plan will be measured by federally identified performance measures collected in the 2122 school year, and these include academic achievement measured using SOL and, of course, exams for reading, mathematics, and science; technical skill attainment measured using student competency records; attainment of industry-recognized post-secondary credentials; and non-traditional career preparation measured using enrollment from the secondary enrollment demographic form; and completion measured using course completion data. Also, participation in work-based learning activities during high school; and finally, secondary school completion and post-secondary placement measured using course completion rate, graduation rate, and transition rates. And this is to higher ed, military, or the workforce. Each year, Carl D., the Carl D. Perkins Plan includes goals for improvement in our career and technical programs based on the performance data that I just outlined. Members of the General Advisory Council for Career and Technical Education, including representation from parents, teachers, higher education, and workforce, took a deep dive into CTE performance throughout, through our comprehensive local needs assessment process. local needs assessment process. This is required every two years for localities that utilize Carl D. Perkins funding. Findings from this group were presented and discussed by the General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education on March 22nd. And we'd like to thank Ms. Riggs for joining the GAC for that meeting and discussion. The findings of the comprehensive local needs assessment included continued need to focus on recruiting and retaining students who represent non-traditional genders in their career pathway. And that's defined as 25% or less of an industry's workforce coming from a specific gender group. Examples include, but are not limited to, recruiting more male students to enroll in programs like dental assisting, veterinary assisting, or teaching electives. It also includes connecting more female students to programs in engineering or computer science. This remains an area of focus, and recruiting of these students will continue next year with targeted marketing of these pathways to students and their families. Another area to watch, and one that remains on our radar, is a relatively new measure tied to students who complete a work-based learning experience before leaving high school. The division saw a huge jump in high-quality work-based learning experiences with over 53% of our CTE completers documenting an experience last year. That's up from 15.64% from the year before. This benchmark is also connected to the upcoming College Career and Civic Readiness Index accreditation standard and will be supported in the local plan and budget presented for your information this evening. This slide breaks down our plan for spending estimated grant funds for the 202324 school year. The Virginia Department of Education has not yet released official funding allocations by locality for next year, and divisions are asked to prepare a budget based on level funding with the current year. Our recommended budget based on that estimated allocation is summarized in this chart and addresses spending required by the Act as well as items that are categorized as permitted. As stipulated in the Perkins Five legislation, up to 5% of funds may be used for the cost to administer the grants. This portion of available funding is split between indirect cost and test proctor shown on the first two lines of the budget summary here. The indirect cost rate is calculated, a formula that equates approximately 2% of the entire grant. These funds go to the Virginia Beach Office of Business Services, and the remaining 3% from this category is used to fund the test proctors who deliver and administer industry credential exams each year. Perkins Five also requires that localities use funds for equipment purchases and for professional development. The proposed local plan and budget includes 107,000 for professional development activities for teachers, administrators, and others involved with technical and career education programming. Professional development efforts for the 2324 school year will include a focus on training tied to technical skills, program accreditations, and work-based learning. Virginia Beach allocates the bulk of our federal Perkins Five funding to equipment, software, and lab resources that allow our students to prepare for diverse career pathways. Over 553,000 is budgeted for equipment, instructional materials at our secondary schools and specialty centers. These items include technology, software, machinery, and instructional resources. Equipment to improve our CTE programs is also supported by non-Perkins sources, like funding from the Virginia Department of Education, other grants, and industry support. Student leadership development is the next item on the budget. This line refers to support for our co-curricular student organizations such as DECA, Educators Rising, FBLA, Skills USA, and TSA. Career and technical student organizations are an integral part of each career and technical program. And as you may have seen on different schools' social media posts, we are experiencing a surge in student participation in leadership contests this year. Last weekend, almost 100 high school students traveled with their teachers to Reston, Virginia to compete in the FBLA State Leadership Conference. Similar trends are happening with the Technology Student Association, TSA, and DECA, and other co-curricular clubs. The proposed budget for the 20232024 school year includes $105,000 to support students who face barriers as members of special populations to compete and attend these events. Funding for a portion of the industry credential exams given to our high school students from Perkins Five is also included, and this funding is increasing to an estimated $100,000. This increase helps cover the cost of a higher number of credentials earned in the 4x4 environment. In addition to these Perkins funds, industry credential vouchers for students are supported with a mix of state and local funding. The proposed budget also includes support for STEM initiatives and efforts to recruit girls into STEM fields. $13,000 is allocated to these efforts. The next line item is a new proposal, which was born of a U.S. Department of Education Office of Career Technical Adult Education Dear Colleague Letter that was just published on March 15th of this year. This communication included guidance that allows local school divisions to use Carl D. Perkins funding for signing bonuses for hard-to-staff CTE teaching positions. We are still awaiting final guidance from the VDOE on how to code these funds, but the proposed allocation is $80,000 towards signing bonuses similar to what the division has offered for high-need areas like math and special education. These funds were carved from the line item for equipment, instructional materials, and software. The final line in the proposed budget represents continued support for high-quality work-based learning, approximately $121,000, is recommended to maintain the work-based learning specialist position created in 2021, and fund related activities that will help connect every student to an internship, mentorship, student service learning, or other work-based learning experience before they leave high school. This funding remains important to our work to support the College Career and Civic Readiness Index accreditation standard. The plan presented for your consideration this evening was crafted with input from members of our General Advisory Council and has been approved by that body. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have questions, I stand ready to answer them.
Thank you.
I thank you.
We are now at 14 consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda this evening. A, Local Special Education Annual Plan: Application and Report for VDOE. B, Policy Review Committee: PRC Recommendations. Amendments. Under amendments, we have: 1. Policy 4-10/Conditions of Employment. 2. Policy 4-22/Drug and Alcohol Testing of Motor Vehicle Drivers. 3. Policy 4-35/Salaries and Compensation. 4. Policy 4-55/Leave With/Without Pay for Family and Medical Purposes. Adoption. 5. Policy 4-27/Gifts to Staff Members. 6. Policy 4-43/Payment to Estate of Deceased Employees. Repeal. 7. Policy 2-48/Salaries and Compensation. This is to be removed and renumbered under Policy 435, under amendments. 8. Policy 4-21/Payment to Estate of Deceased Employees. This is to be removed and renumbered to Policy 4-43, as you see under amendments. 9. Policy 4-75/Conditions of Employment. This is to be removed and renumbered as Policy 4-10, under amendments. And 10. Policy 7-37/Gifts to Staff Members. And this is to be removed and renumbered to Policy 427, under amendments. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items? If so, please identify any item that should be moved to the action agenda. Hearing no call to move an item from the consent agenda, I call for a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Martin has made the motion and seconded by Mrs. Anderson. I call for a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now at the action part of the agenda. A, Personnel Report: Administrative Appointments. I call for a motion to approve the April 4th, 2023 Personnel Report. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Jennifer Franklin is seconded by Mrs. Kathleen Brown. Any discussion? I call for a vote to approve the April 4th, 2023 Personnel Report. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. And there are no administrative appointments this evening, correct? Okay. B, this is to authorize the superintendent to enter into the MOA for Something in the Water Transportation. I call for a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the city for Something in the Water Festival Transportation. Do I have a motion? Are we going to read that, Ms. Lanetti?
Read the entire agreement?
Yeah, we don't need to do that.
I was going to, I'm not sure if we got the slides on, but I can explain to you.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion? Ms. Anderson, and do I have a second? Ms. Franklin, is there any discussion right now?
Did you want me to do a presentation for you briefly on it? There's not a lot for that. As mentioned, in April of 2019, you first entered into an agreement to provide transportation for Something in the Water at that time period. There is a statute in Virginia, 22.1182, which talks about the use of school board vehicles and what you can and cannot use, and there are actually limitations for them. This was actually amended in 2022 to allow a few more uses for them. But one of the things you can't do, you couldn't do at the time, is to use these for commercial purposes or for programs that were not related to persons with disabilities, for city-based programs, or for persons, elderly individuals. When we were first approached with the Something in the Water in 2019, the way to work around this was to contract with the city. So we created an MOU at that time, or an MOA, Memorandum of Understanding, that allowed the city to contract with Something in the Water, and then we contracted with the city, and we determined that it was an appropriate public purpose at that time period. In 2022, the statute, 22.1182, was amended. There is some language in it. We're not 100% sure what's the referral, is the language. We couldn't find a definition for it. So the city decided to go forward with the MOA for transportation, similar, almost identical to what we did in 2019. As you saw, I just got that approved, the final version of that, late this afternoon, so we were able to bring it forward to you. And Ms. Turner, if you could move to the next slide. It's not a law and document. What you will see is that the city will reimburse the school board up to $265,000. The rate will be $45 per hour for school bus drivers, $50 per hour for support personnel, and $60 per hour for supervisory personnel. There will be overtime paid as necessary. Bus drivers will be compensated also for the one hour's worth of cleaning on the buses. There are, the per-mile charges have already been calculated to include the maintenance on the vehicle. And per the statute, it is necessary that the city cover the insurance costs for us and reimburse us for damages for the buses, so you would not be out of any expenses for it. So those are the general terms. It's very similar to what we had in 2019. And as mentioned, 2019, we had absolutely no problems with the transportation services or the MOU. The MOU does, however, need to be in effect by April 10th. And there we go. Right now, the time period is scheduled for May 1st. It can extend past May 1st if we have contract issues. So if there's damage to a bus or a late payment, the agreement would remain into effect. But otherwise, it will conclude at the end of the festival when the payments come through. And those are the terms of the agreement. You do have the agreement in front of you. It is not a long agreement. It is my understanding that the city council is considering this at the same time period, but this has been run through the city council. Are there any other questions we could answer for you about this MOA?
Ms. Brown.
So I'm going to repeat a question I asked you before we were in the meeting. This $45 per bus driver per hour, is 100% of that going to go to the bus driver?
I am going to have to turn that over to Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Very good. All right. And then can you very quickly, and this is mostly for the public, because you guys did this in the workshop, go over the procedures for security before they load onto our buses so that we can make sure there's nothing that would negatively impact our students?
I am going to turn that over to the experts.
Thank you.
Good evening. The event staff will screen all persons boarding our buses at both the origination site as well as to return to the amphitheater.
And then I just want to make one last comment also for the public that I have checked with administration, and these bus drivers will have the opportunity to have enough sleep before they are transporting our students. So, thank you. I'll be supporting this.
Ms. Manning.
So it has in here that the max amount that they are required to pay us is $265,000. What was the MOA in 2019? Do you remember the total amount? Does anyone?
The final total, I'm not sure. I know it was roughly about the same amount.
What was in the contract?
Honestly, I don't know what we ended up paying in the end. I know it was very close to that amount. I'd have to go back and get what the final reimbursement was at the end of the festival.
Because I guess, you know, costs have gone up since 2019, I believe. So I guess I'm a little concerned that if costs have gone up and we're having the same contracted max amount, that we may not be meeting our expenses?
I know those hourly rates are significantly higher than they were in 2019. It may have been that we're better able to calculate. At that time period, since we had not done this, we didn't know what, how many buses and how much transportation we were going to do. So I think we're able to calculate better based on the last time we did this.
So staff can state that our costs will not exceed $265,000?
Yes, as it's calculated, and we expect to use fewer buses this year than in the past.
Okay. And then the law that you referenced, Ms. Lanetti, requires indemnification of the school board. I don't see that in the contract.
The language you have, the city is not authorized to indemnify similar to the school board. However, they will take responsibility for the damage to the buses. So that is a problem we have, is that they're not authorized to indemnify. So we worked out the language that we believe will cover that. The city understands they will be responsible for any damages to the buses or instances that happen.
They understand it, or it's in the contract? We just got this like an hour ago.
And I apologize, but that is about when I got it. Language you see is under the insurance, which is Section 6. They will provide the excess liability insurance for this and self-insured retention on this. And again, because now the cities or school boards in Virginia are authorized to indemnify, they can't enter into that agreement on it, but they understand the provisions. And we believe that the insurance will be adequate to cover that.
Okay. And then just one last question. On the first page of the MOA, number 2, under term, it says, "Should the date of the festival be changed? The term will coincide with the dates." I don't quite understand what that means. Does that mean that the festival dates can't go past May 1?
No, I think what would happen if a hurricane would come in and you had to cancel it for that weekend, and it moved to the following weekend, we would change the dates to the following weekend.
So I have some concerns that basically the dates don't matter. So if they decide that they have to cancel the concert or the festival for the weekend that they're currently having it, they could reschedule it for July, and we would be required to honor that?
We would agree to that, but obviously, we could terminate the contract if we don't agree to that also.
How can we terminate the contract? Where in the language does it say we can do that?
We would come back to them and say, we can't meet those needs, but...
Where in the contract does it say we can do that? Because right here, it says that if the festival changes, the term will coincide with the dates. This, to me, is telling me that we have to honor it.
That would be our intention at this point. If you would like that term in there, they need to come back to you and get verification as to the term, as to whether you're agreeable to do it another date. We could certainly add that to the agreement, but I'd have to take that to the city. We could certainly add that to the agreement, but I'd have to take that to the city.
I mean, I guess I would like to ask staff, what, you know, what happens if the festival is canceled and they want to come back to us at another date?
It says the MOA will be in effect from that date to that date.
No, what you say is this line. Should the date of the festival be changed, the term will coincide with the dates.
I understand that it would then be within that timeframe. Is that not correct?
If the date of the festival, the whole festival is scheduled for that time period.
Yeah, this is the definition of the effect of the MOA. Regardless of that, MOA would be in effect between those two days. That's the way that I read it, that it can't go beyond May 1st.
And I think what Mrs. Manning is saying is that it could also be read that if you decide to schedule in July because a hurricane came through when they did their weekend, that would this commit us to having to do it in July because we didn't say we had agreed to a new date?
So I hear your interpretation. I interpret it as the MOA is confined to that, but it's...
That was Kami's interpretation, not mine.
Legal clarification of what those, what those mean. But from a basic reading that standpoint, that this MOA does not go beyond May 1st, 2023. But if there's legal opinion that says that there's not, that what I just said is not correct, then I understand your concern.
I could see the ambiguity with the language on there. We could certainly clarify this if you want them to come back to you or if it's a date that would be inconvenient for us to, and not, we would not be able to provide those buses. That could be something we could amend to the contract.
I mean, I want to be able to provide the buses, but I also want to make sure that, you know, our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. It's a little frustrating that City Council just brought us, brought it to us with an hour's notice of the meeting.
Would you like, are we proposing changing it to that you need to confirm availability if there's another date? The date outside of this?
Yeah, if the date, if they have to reschedule, then we need to be able to authorize that.
All right. So let me see if I can play with some language. Should the date of the festival be changed, the school board will need to approve, altering the term of the contract or the MOA?
But don't they need us to vote on this today?
Yeah, that's going to be a problem. I may have to make a call over there, or we could say... The other thing is you can, what you could do is authorize the superintendent and I to work with the city to make sure terminology doesn't lock you into a date. We would have to come back, so which would be, instead of authorizing this particular agreement, you would authorize us to go back and finalize an MOU that protects your ability to alter the dates or approve the dates should the dates become altered.
So could we approve the MOA with that exception that we authorize you or the superintendent to make those changes?
Yes, because I'm, I mean, obviously I have to go back and speak with the, with the legal counsel for the city who's handling this, Mr. Harmeister.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I was curious, is number 17, that doesn't cover this date issue under severability?
Severability generally would take out the entire clause, and so we have to have some term clause in there.
Ms. Anderson?
Didn't you state earlier that this needs to be approved by April 10th?
It goes into effect April 10th.
So when would we come back as a board to approve this if we don't approve it tonight?
If you don't, I mean, that would be, you would be ratifying after the fact, not the preferred way to do it. Technically, you could approve it on April 25th, but the festival's the 28th, and that's going to be a problem for you, so we wanted to get it in here this week. I think the better course of action would be if you're agreeable with the general terms of the MOU, that you authorize the superintendent and I to work with the city to come up with some protection for you on the dates and see if we can arrange for that.
So that last sentence on number two, should the date of the festival be changed, could we make that to state after that comma, the school board authorizes the superintendent to make the changes or whatever? I mean, I mean, can we just put that in writing here so that we could have it?
Correct, but, and here's the difficulty we're in. City Council's voting on a version of this tonight, which might be a different version that she might need me to give. And we, so we would be approving one version, they would be approving another. So I think that that's something, language like that, but I'm probably going to need to go back and talk with them because we obviously can't sign two separate agreements.
So maybe we should just leave this language as is, and then we could make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to make any changes that become necessary. Do you see what I'm saying?
I'm not sure that addresses Mrs. Manning's concern because Mrs. Manning's concern is that we are locked in, if you read it, it's a, we are locked into whatever dates in there. We want the qualifier that the school board must approve a future date or a different date than this.
Personally, I don't see a problem with it if it's in June, unless it's the week of graduation. I mean, I really, I mean, I don't see another reason why we shouldn't just go ahead and approve this as is. And as I said, then we'll have a separate motion to authorize the superintendent to make any changes necessary in the future.
Dr. Spence?
Yeah, I think you're all saying the same thing. And so I think what Kami's saying is if you can approve it as is, so you're approving the same MOA as what City Council's contemplating tonight, and then in the same motion, authorize the superintendent to address any changes to the MOA with city staff. That would need to happen as a result of the, any change of dates. You just do that in the same motion. That gives us a little bit of flexibility to go back and have that conversation with the city staff after you and City Council have contemplated the same agreement.
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah, you can take my name out. Or are you going to leave it?
Ms. Brown?
Okay, so I think it makes sense to do what Dr. Spence said, but I was wondering if number 12 goes with this. This MOA may be otherwise modified in writing. With the written acceptance of both parties, all modifications will be affixed to this MOA and will reference this MOA in any prior modification. Would that address the problem?
I think it would, as long as you let the superintendent handle that. Otherwise, it depends on how much time. I think there would be significant... If it were to go past the end of April, we would have time to get it back to you if we have to fix it. I don't see them moving it up at any point, so we probably have sufficient time. You're just in a time crunch today.
And then just one final thing. I would hope that in the future, we get these types of things just a little sooner so that we can avoid the potential of having a special meeting over this. Thank you.
And I'd actually said to the city, why, why couldn't it be that we authorize that this is an annual agreement that was brought back to us and looking, instead of having to go between the parties every time? Their question to us was, yeah, that's a good idea. We probably should have thought about it, and we just didn't. They resurrected the prior agreement on there. So I think there's a better way to handle this in the future. We were in a very similar situation when this happened in 2019. We had a short amount of time to produce this.
Okay, Mr. Callen?
The only question or request that I have was if we're going to be voting on something that Dr. Spence just said, could he repeat it? Because I wasn't able to understand him very clearly.
I wrote down a motion, if you want to hear it. It would be to approve the MOA as presented with the qualifier that the superintendent has the authority to address changes related to the change of dates due to the rescheduling of the festival under item 2. Is that okay with everyone?
Got it?
All right, when you're ready, I'll make the motion. Well, I didn't make the motion, but when everybody's done the discussion, I will.
Okay. Has everybody finished? I don't think we have any more in the queue.
All right, I move to approve the MOA as presented with the qualifier that the superintendent has the authority to address changes related to change of dates due to the rescheduling of the festival under item 2.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Brown? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand to authorize this MOA for Something in the Water Transportation.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. That brings us down to C, Policy Review Committee, PRC Recommendations. One, Bylaw 128/Committee Organizations and Boards, School Board Assignments. I call for a motion to approve Bylaw 128/Committee Organizations and Boards, School Board Assignments. Do I have a motion? Ms. Anderson, do I have a second? Ms. Martin? Okay, is there any discussion with this? Any questions or discussion? Okay, I call for a vote to approve Bylaw 128/Committee Organizations and Boards, School Board Assignments. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Number two, Bylaw 132/Adoption, Amendment, Repeal, or Suspension Policies. I call for a motion to approve Bylaw 132, Adoption, Amendment, Repeal, or Suspension Policies. Do I have a motion? Yes, Ms. Franklin, and do I have a second? Ms. Manning? Okay, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Number three, Appendix B/School Board Standing Rules/Time and Place for Regular Meetings. I call for a motion to approve Appendix B/School Board Standing Rules/Time and Place for Regular Meetings. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Franklin, and do I have a second? Ms. Anderson? Is there any discussion? I call for a vote to approve that Appendix B, School Board Standing Rules, Time and Place for Regular Meetings. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. D, Appointment of School Board Member to the Access College Foundation. I call for a motion to approve the appointment of Kimberly A. Melnick as the school board liaison to the Access College Foundation. Do I have a motion? Ms. Brown, and do I have a second? Ms. Martin? Is there any discussion? C and none, I call for a vote to approve the appointment of Kimberly A. Melnick as the school board liaison to the Access College Foundation. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. And we are now on 16, Committee Organization or Board Reports. Do any school board members have anything to report? As a reminder, this is the time for short reports, and school board members may file full reports with the clerk to be distributed to other school board members. Do we have anybody that has a report for any? Okay, Ms. Franklin?
So we had the Gifted CAC meeting last night, and I wanted to let everybody know the good news that this is the first year back with site visits since COVID. And so they've completed over 20 visits so far throughout the different schools. And so Pam's and, I'm sorry, Princess Anne Middle School and First Colonial High School were the two schools that were visited during this period of time between the meetings. And just positive reviews overall, you know, just in terms of what the GRTs are doing, the feedback they're getting. I just think that every time I sit in this meeting, I'm just amazed at what great GRTs we have. So everything is just always very positive in terms of what they're learning on these site visits. And they are prepping their recommendations to the board as we speak, so we should be hearing from them very soon. But I just want to let them know that everything is to be, every site visit seems to go very well and just glowing remarks overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Ms. Weems?
Yes, I attended the Building Utilization Committee. The members are David Culpepper, Mike Callen, and myself, and we elected Mr. Culpepper as the chair. We reviewed the whole notebook of space, of numbers. The demographer educated us on building utilization. So if anybody has any questions, they may reach out to Mr. Culpepper. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any? Mr. Callen?
I had an opportunity to attend what is referred to as HARITA. I don't know that they say it like that, but nonetheless, those are the acronyms. And since this is a world full of acronyms, that's what the acronyms list. That was on the 15th of March, and I was given an opportunity to tour the facility, learn about their programs with all sorts of special needs individuals. And it was very impressive and very informative, and I look forward to the next opportunity to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. Okay, now we are going to go into closed session. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Weems to read into closed session before we leave the dais. And after she reads it, I'll call for a second and a vote, and then we will move to the Einstein Lab to proceed with the closed session.
I move that the school board recesses into closed session in accordance with the Exceptions to Open Meetings Law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraph 1378 is amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees in any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion or the performance of specific individuals. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on the matter, namely to discuss legal advice concerning an administrator's contract terms, requests to join in class action lawsuits, status and contract issues related to the Laskin Road Annex sale, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Okay, we've had a motion to go into closed, and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. We have 10 minutes.
Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in this closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, I make the following motion. One...
Point of order, point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seconded by Ms. Anderson, okay. Now, for the motion, I make the following...
Madam Chair, we have to...
Oh, that's right, discussion.
Discussion, and I want to state for the record that I'm going to vote to not certify because the closed session topic... because the closed session topic went from the topic of the superintendent's contract to an attack on me.
So, this motion you're not going to do?
This is to vote for closed session. We haven't voted yet, and this is my reason of why I'm voting to not certify. We have to include that in the minutes, and that's why I made that statement.
Okay. So, do you need me, any more discussion on that? All right, do I need to make this motion now?
You need to call for a vote.
We need to call for a vote on certification.
On the certification, okay, I'm sorry. All that are in favor of voting for the certification of the closed session, please raise your hand.
We have five ayes.
And all that are against, please raise your hand.
She's not believing. We have two nays.
Three.
We do?
No, I voted aye.
Kathleen, Carolyn, and Ms. Manning.
Okay, so the vote was, we have six ayes and two nay.
No, five and three.
Okay. And Ms. Weems voted, okay, so nay was Ms. Brown, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Weems.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So the vote for certification of, certification of closed was five ayes, three nays, the motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to make the following motion. One, that the superintendent or designee and the school board attorney are authorized to negotiate an extension of Alaskan Road Annex purchase agreement with TFJG Canopy LLC. Two, that the superintendent or designee and the school board attorney are authorized to negotiate and sign an agreement with TFJG Canopy LLC regarding the storage of dirt/fill on or at 1413 Alaskan Road. And three, that the superintendent or designee are authorized to enter into additional agreements/arrangements related to 1413 Alaskan Road that do not require school board approval to implement. Do I have a motion? Ms. Martin, and seconded by Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, I've got a quick clarification.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, Kami. If I did not vote to certify, am I allowed to vote on this? I can't remember the procedure.
Yeah, this is just your open session.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, everybody clear? All in favor of voting for this motion, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you, and there are no nays, right? Okay, thank you. This school board meeting is adjourned.